Are we ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of every team and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Although we are in person, remote participation is possible. You can access, the access information is available on the town website. For all of those that are here, please be aware of the fire exit, which is to the left of this room. In the event of emergency, please move in a common orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of it are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify themselves, give their name, give their address, and then present their case. Planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time, anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves, along with their address, and direct any questions to the board and only the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Also, just additional instructions, if you keep your mask on if it's comfortable, if you're separated by partitions like we are, you can remove it. And also, if you're speaking at the podium, you can remove your mask when you're talking to us. Okay? Thank you. Michelle, please call the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is a tabled item, case number PB 2021-01-1. Upon the matter of request by LandTech, Surveying and Planning, PLLC, acting as agent for Pum LLC, Quiklys, for preliminary final site plan approval to construct a convenience store with gas station, drive-through tenant, and detached car wash building with site-related improvements on premises 2590 Culver Road in a C business district.
Thank you. Before you start, I do need a motion to have this removed from the table. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, before you get too far here, I'm going to recuse myself from this case.
Sure.
But if you don't see me as too much of a distraction, I'd like to remain seated here.
You have to keep your mask on, though, so we can't see your face.
Oh, I'm planning to know what he's...
I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is our alternate member here right now?
She is.
Should we have her sit in for Mr. Evelyn in this case? She's been following it.
Yeah, and I think she's participated in the past. If it's not, if you don't mind musical chairs, Mr. Evelyn.
Sorry. Mike, I just...
She just asked if I could stay.
I know. I apologize.
Well, I'm just gonna do this.
Jackie, do I take that as an aye from you to remove it from the table?
You can have all plans returned.
When I say yes.
You want to do a aye first?
Aye. Thank you.
She says chair.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Sharaba. I'm with LandTech, and I'm here representing Quiklys this evening. Also in attendance is Lou Terranoli, who is real estate director for Quiklys organization and can answer any questions that I cannot. Two weeks ago, you had a workshop related to this project, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but Lou was there, so we're going to rely on Lou and your time at the board. Ed Martin from my office took very detailed notes, along with Michelle, so I have a good guideline of what was said during the meeting. But I know we've been working on this project together for about eight months, and we had some heavy discussions regarding the layout originally, and then we came up with a clear direction on how we were going to design this project. So I think we've gone a long way, and tonight, we're looking for final approval based on your feedback from what we've made the comments on. So let me just briefly start with, the first thing that was an issue was pedestrian access, how people were going to navigate this site and make sure that people can do it in a safe and orderly fashion. To that end, we are proposing a sidewalk along our private drive. It'll be on the north side of the private drive, and then the sidewalk will then run north to the west face of the proposed building. So that's a very easy way for people to access the building, and I think a very safe one. The other point was how is landscaping being handled? More specifically, how are we going to shield the residential homes to the south? So what we did is we sent our survey crew out, and if you look at the landscaping lighting plan, we located about 15 or 20 trees. These are mature maple trees, cherry trees, some ash trees along that line. Those are existing trees that we felt that should be clear so that, and we're not going to touch that vegetation. Some of those are on the owner's property of those residents as well, so, you know, they can control their own destiny. I think the other point that I should point out, too, if you've been to the site and look along that west property line, there's about an eight-foot change in grade. So if you're standing on the former Wombach property, looking at those houses on Wicklow, after you get past the first house, there's a tremendous drop-off, so you're basically looking almost at the second floor of the house. So I think, once those trees leaf out, those existing trees, I think those houses will be shielded rather well. And then we added nine...
Can I, I just need to stop you really quick, John. Is there a plan for that landscaping?
Yeah, landscaping and lighting plan, I think it's page...
So I'm referring back to the original one that we questioned last, at the workshop.
Page five, the landscaping plan that we have in front of you?
It's out of order on mine, Ellen. This is the second one.
Oh, yeah. I have to thank Michelle for making extra copies for the board, so appreciate that. But what we're looking at is the landscape plan, it's page five of six. So they have to look at the numbers, which is in the bottom right corner of the paper.
Okay. So the only trees you are going to add are these eight trees, then?
Yeah, there are nine Bosnian pines.
Okay. So we're at the same place we were at the workshop?
Okay. I don't have the benefit of being there, but yes, I guess. But again, we did show, reflect the existing trees.
Go ahead. I'm just, I'm sorry, I just didn't, I wasn't catching up with you on everything you were talking about.
Yeah. So I guess to stay on the landscape topic, you know, we also showed pine trees or Bosnian pines along our west property line. And I know that was, it's been an issue since day one. What's Providence doing to the east of us? Do they like this project? Do they want it? You know, are they feel comfortable with it? And we have a letter from Providence, and Mike Greensberg, who's the executive director that has reviewed the layout and provided a letter of approval, so I can pass this down to the chairman. So I think that addresses our east property line, as far as what we're proposing there with the berm. And then I know there was talk about the landscaping along Culver Road, particularly the fence. So we're doing a wrought iron type fence with stone pillars that's going to run from the western access road along the right-of-way and terminate basically at the north range line of the canopy. And we have plantings and things shown on that as well. We also added additional plantings on the, along the outdoor seating area, we added some trees there. I think that, knowing what Quiklys do, that this is probably minimal, they'll probably even add more when the facility is built. So that took care of that. We have provided updated elevations in your packet, provided by the architect, that shows the elevations of the building, first floor, and those are generally consistent with what we've had before. I know that we've had some conversations about the canopy, and I guess we can, I'll get to that in a minute. There was a question regarding the asphalt and its relationship with the car wash. So we have concrete aprons both on the north and south side of the car wash facility, and those are typical and consistent with car wash functions and how they're set up. The order board has been shown, and we have eight cars stacking for that. And those are the notes that I have regarding the meeting.
Lou, you have a couple things?
Yep.
Again, my name is Lou Terranoli, Director of Real Estate for Quiklys. I just wanted to follow up, if I may, with John's comments regarding the pavement. We did have a detailed discussion about that a couple of weeks ago, and I could tell you that our annual maintenance program includes an inspection of the pavement at each site. So if there is a problem, a pothole or anything, it is immediately addressed. Another part of our maintenance program is every two years, regardless of the condition of the lot, a lot is sealed and restriped. And we also talked about the history of our locations and parking lots, and a couple of our locations that we go back 20 years, typically with good maintenance, as my company does, with that resealing and striping, you would get about 20 years from a parking lot. So this parking lot will be in excellent condition from now and 20 years from now, probably be replaced, but those are the operational issues and challenges and protocols that we have to keep that in good shape of. Good-looking parking lots, safe, secure, without potholes is essential to running a good business.
I guess my one question that hasn't been answered yet is, do we know what the failure has been of the asphalt? And I also noticed that you've got 26 feet on the entry and 15 feet on the exit. So is it something they're bringing in that would be the failure, or is it something that's leaving that would be the failure?
We really don't see those failures. I asked that question, I apologize if I didn't address it. Because we are out there almost, let's say annually, semiannually, looking for that pothole or something where there would be a failure, we would immediately address it. But if that, even if that doesn't happen, even if everything's out, every two years, it's sealed and restriped.
All right. So why is it 26 feet on one side and 15 on the other?
That's a good, John, do you know what?
It's really not a hard, fast rule. 26 cars, about 18 to 20 feet long. It does stage there. This concrete is generally used sometimes in tunnel operations where you have a spray attendant, it doesn't really, we're not having that here. But, you know, there might be staged there for a little while, so your salts and things will drip off a car. When you go out, you don't really have that, the car is clean. So it's really not a hard, fast-set rule, but...
Yeah. Here's what I can tell you, I'm witnessing over at the property on Ridge Road, is that the failure happened on the exit of the facility, not on the entrance of the facility.
Yeah.
And it happened not only at that location, but at other locations, so that's why I'm asking, if it was a failure due to chemicals, or if it was a failure because of the amount of traffic on there, but...
I'm not familiar with the site you're talking about, but most failures you're going to have is either with asphalt, because in concrete, it's going to be either construction, not, you know, not compacted properly, not the right construction methodology, or if it's poorly drained. So if you have water that's just sitting there, and then you're going to have a freeze-thaw condition, so, you know, we take, you know, make sure that we grade this thing right so the water pitches away.
I can tell you, John, it's on the asphalt, not on the concrete.
Yeah, it's probably the gap between the concrete and asphalt has popped, probably.
Well, it's all the way down through. I mean, you can see it. I'm talking about the project next to the Hampton Hotel. I can't think of it for the life of my...
I understand, I haven't been through there, so I can't speak to it.
They've already replaced the apron going out to Ridge Road, and they've replaced the asphalt on the exit.
Yeah.
But they haven't replaced the concrete, that's why I'm asking. The other thing that I think I asked about on this, what was going on, what are you doing with the water?
The stormwater?
No. The water that you're using to wash the car with.
We're not proposing to recycle at this time, so...
It's going into the storm sewer?
Well, the water is, it's not a lot of water that really comes off the car. Do you have any, do we give them any specs on that?
No, we don't, the question, it's, we hand through the municipal sewer system, so...
Yeah, it's an oil-water separator in a car wash, so, and that's going into the sanitary sewer.
All right. And we've gotten a comment from the county on that? I'm asking staff, I guess.
So I'm looking at the county comments dated January 20th, and I guess what would be practical in this application is that it is requiring approval by the health department. So when we add the lateral for the new building, along with the oil-water separator, they'll review and approve that plan.
All right.
There was also a question about possible noise levels from the car wash, is that...
Yes. I could address that. And I do have some information that I could give to the board, but just let me, let me give a verbal summary. So with the manufacturer for the car wash equipment, they gave me decibel levels to take a look at, is what, and I took it from the entrance, because that's closest to where the residents would be. So basically, if you take those decibel levels and reduce them every three, as they did, basically by the point you get at the access road, and again, I have this in writing, I give it to the board, you'd be about the same noise level as a rainfall. When you get to the property line of those neighbors on Witlock, that noise level would be down to like 20 decibels, which would be around like rustling leaves. So I have that information with me, if I, we'd be happy to give that to the chairman.
Please.
So what it is, is information from the manufacturer, the equipment itself, and I also did some research on decibel levels. I believe one is Harvard, maybe one MIT, I have that information in there. And I did an extrapolation spreadsheet that would show where these would be at these two different points, farthest from the site. So I'd be happy to give that to you.
If you have that, I'm happy to make copies for the board members to review as well.
I have a question about sound as well, along the lines of the vacuums. From my experience, sometimes a lot of the noise that comes from the vacuums isn't necessarily the vacuum, it's customers who are using the vacuums and playing really loud music as they use the vacuums to clean their cars. So I know that that could probably happen at the gas pumps, and it could certainly, but it seems, in my experience, happened quite often at the vacuum cleaners. So is there some type of, and that noise can certainly carry, and they're usually there for longer than filling up. Well, they have to turn off their car essentially to fuel their vehicle, so I guess a lot of times, sometimes that reduces the number of times you hear the music. But is there any policy, or how does that get, what happens if you had, have you had issues like that?
And I think a follow-up question, maybe...
I think I got the, is it more the vacuums? Which we have on the northern side of the property, close to the busiest roads.
Yeah.
He's more talking about, so if there's clients that are lingering for an extended period of time, playing loud music, is there, have a policy within the store to, hey, we've got to move on?
I'll be on, there's not a direct policy on that, but if it was an issue, one thing about Quiklys, we're a local business, that can be brought to the attention of the manager, and the manager could talk to them.
I just, I only bring it up because I know that it is an issue at other locations who have the free vacuums, but it's less of a problem because it's not necessarily near residential. So I'm just kind of bringing that up as a concern.
Yeah, and I think, I think a follow-up question, which we asked, I think at the workshop as well, is what is the hours of operation for the car wash? And I think also, the vacuums would be part of that.
24 hours, and I did confirm that in writing to the letter I did to Michelle and put that in there.
And where are the compressors for the vacuums?
They're on the north property line, right underneath where you see snow storage. So it'd be the northeast corner of the property, about four or five parking spots in.
The northeast, about four or five parking spots in?
Yes.
You wouldn't turn off the vacuums at nighttime?
They're, I believe they're 24 hours also.
Oh. Yeah. I'm not crazy about that, to be honest with you. I want to talk a little bit about this berm again. We're only getting the same amount of trees that we talked about at the workshop.
That's correct.
Can we do a fence to keep that?
What our concern is there, and we...
My concern is potential neighbors. I'm going to tell you right now, okay? I mean, I understand that there's no neighbors there, and I can do this in a vacuum. And then when they come along, I have to say, oh, too bad, I approved this, and I can't do anything to mitigate it, so you can live with it or not build.
Well, in our conversations with the neighbor, Providence, so should they go forward, and we're hopeful they are, they also have another 50 feet on the other side of ours, before they even have some pavement, and then they have buildings. So for what it's worth, they were okay with the plantings that we have there. We were in agreement with them that we could not have our project come any closer than what it is. We had to maintain this green space area, and they have almost a similar distance on the other side, then pavement, then buildings. And that may change, I can't speak to their different layouts, but that's the way it's...
I can tell you, I'm here asking the question, though, they aren't.
Well, so if I could, but I could speak to you a little bit about that. So if you go back in time, when we first came here, Providence was moving at the same speed that we were, and think we were a little bit ahead. Well, we're obviously ahead now.
Right.
And that berm was straddled along the property line. So we've taken it now and put it solely on our side. Because I think in the near future, when they come in, you're going to have the same opportunity to ask for landscaping from them.
Right.
Right? So I mean, they're agreed to our landscaping plan, you know?
I actually agree with the applicant there. I mean, this is the application that's before us, so to me, whatever comes down the pike down the road, they have to mitigate. Conversely, to that point, though, I have some issue with the landscaping that faces south to those residents.
Yeah.
Because we do have the headlights in that direction, the mature trees that are over there are just that, mature trees, and they're not going to be very shading down at lower levels.
I agree.
And I think those pine trees, I think we mentioned it at workshop, you know, are going to take 10, 15 years to have any maturity to them, to really provide much shielding.
Would you like a berm along that, and the trees? Elevate those trees a little?
A berm and trees, or a few trees and a fence, or whatever you guys would prefer?
I could see what might make the most sense as a berm.
I would be fine with that.
With the trees that we have presented, we could certainly do that.
Can we go over the height of this berm? How, what's the, the berm that's on the east side, and then whatever you want to do on the south side, you can tell us later. But is that four feet, or is that three feet that you guys are putting this up?
I think it's three.
Moving to the, kind of find the grading plan. I want to wish you a plan, a site plan, do I have a grading plan?
I'm sorry? Yeah, we, we did, and I believe it was like two and a half feet, if I remember.
Yeah, the existing grade is at 402.
You can tell me in inches if you want.
So 36 inches, three feet.
So edge of asphalt, right, John, if I'm looking at this correct, edge of asphalt in that location is about 404.
404, three.
And top of berm is 407, so about a three-foot tall berm. Is that fair?
Yeah. And it's going to be a little higher on the other side, because it's 402 on the neighbor's property. So it'll be three foot of elevation on, from the west, five foot from the east. And if we keep that same elevation for a berm along the south property line, does that work? I think we can make that look real nice along where those trees are.
Yeah, I think a three or four-foot berm would be appropriate to shield the headlights, as long as...
I have a question about that south side. So the house that's existing there now has a few mature trees that are in place. What's, is there any possibility of keeping those in place? I know it's close to the drive aisle, but I think if anything could be done to keep them, it would be a win-win for everybody, because it'd be less expensive for you to keep a tree, and...
We agree. Actually, we, I think one might have to come out for the road, we took a look at it, we've got some aerial photographs, but the majority of what you're referring to, even with the road, would be able to stay.
I think that would be really a good place to go, because then we'd be able to keep some mature trees in place, and of course, it wouldn't really be an additional cost.
So to your point, and, you know, I like protecting trees as well, you know, along that south property line, we could grant a 15-foot conservation easement, so those trees can stay in perpetuity, you know, so we don't have to, we're not planning on touching those trees that are adjacent to the property line, so we could give you something to say, hey, we don't want you to touch those trees, and put the berm just outside of that easement, so we can control that easement, or control the berm. Because I think we really don't want to touch any of those existing trees that are right along the property line. I think it's a great benefit, we got five lilac bushes that are between the house and Culver Road, they're on their property, we don't want to, you know...
Brad, it's hard to tell, but looking at street view, the majority of the trees, the mature trees on the lot with the house that's going to be demolished, are really close to the intersection.
That's why I was asking for clarification, yeah.
It would be tough to keep any, if any, of those, I think. Unfortunately.
Some can stay, based on our view. We'll know when...
And we're talking about the ones that are immediately adjacent to the house. Like, I know that you already identified these ones along there, but, I don't know, there must be four or five, but like Spencer says, it's really difficult to tell from the aerial if it's even plausible.
Well, that'd be my fault, because I was really focused on the street line trees, I didn't really go internally to locate those, but we can reflect those on the final plan and see if they're, if they're available to stay, we could put orange construction fence around them, and...
There's a pine and what look like two oaks that are relatively large, that are possible.
Yeah, we're agreeable, if we can keep them, we'll, and they're in good shape.
Yeah. If they don't interfere with the road, in our view, is maybe, maybe one, two, we would definitely keep the rest, without question.
Is that something, John, that you might be able to spot those on a survey?
Yeah, I'll add them on the final plan prior to the chairman's side.
Thanks.
Some of the lack of questions on my part, I'll be honest with you, John, is just, I haven't had a chance to look at the latest drawings. I mean, we got them at 5:30 this afternoon, so I've been, I'm sort of singing along with you as you're leading us.
Yeah.
Can you, I did notice the signs on the buildings, can you tell us, are those going to be lit, or what is the intent with those?
The intent of the signs on the building would be backlit, yes.
To be backlit?
Yeah, back, the lights behind the...
Yeah, I understand the term. Okay.
And signage is coming back as a separate application?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So the signs that we're seeing here are not anything you're interested in?
Oh, no, the signs that you're seeing will come back in a formal application.
Right. We're not approving signage.
Yeah, but as, but I'd like you, if you wouldn't mind just looking at the rendering, we spent a good amount of time trying to come up with a good monument sign that was attractive for the area and attractive for the fund of the property, so you would not be seeing anything different with the formal sign package than that rendering right there. That's what we will be submitting.
Can you talk about the canopy?
Yes. I remember at length, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about standard canopies and enhanced canopies, and I was here for that conversation. So what we'd like to offer to the board is this canopy that's on the rendering now. This is what we feel is an enhanced canopy for us, we feel it's a very good-looking canopy, it's something the neighborhood, we're certainly proud of, it talks about our brand and our brand recognition very well. I know there's some other enhanced canopies that we talked about, but without having something to physically look at, we wanted to offer this canopy. We also canvassed the area for other canopies, and I don't want to say they were in the style of this, because I think this one is nicer than some of the other ones in the area. So we feel this is an upgrade over some of the others in the area, and would really reflect, to make the property look really good.
I think it is nicer that some of the area, I'll give you that. But I really do prefer the more residential look and feel of the, with the parapet style, with the faux shed, I guess, the faux angle roof, just like the ones, just like the one you have in Webster, next to the, what is that, 104 right there? And then multiple other ones that I kind of had pointed out that were in Webster, all have that sort of false pitch roof on them. I kind of think that it just, more or less, just is more signage on the, with all the branding that goes around it, and especially since this is in a residential area, that would be more in keeping with the neighborhood. And I do want to acknowledge your comment, that there are other ones that are in the median area that are not a nice, but I'd like to try to get something a little nicer.
I would, I would second that. I think, I look across the street and I see an advertisement on that. I mean, I didn't have any comment on the time, but I'm also looking at yours and it looks like another advertisement to me. And I assume you're going to want that lit also.
Uh, that, that would be lit also, yes.
Oh yeah.
And we, we did a photometric.
We got a billboard there.
Well, we did a photometric plan that showed, and it should be in your package, that the light spillage from both the site lighting and the canopy lighting would not be spilling off, uh, our property.
Yeah, but it's still going to glow.
Yes.
I think.
And I think what you're asking, I think, is are the faces of the canopy that you're proposing here lit? Not, we understand the underside of the canopy is lit.
I don't believe the faces around are, are lit.
Okay.
No.
Is that what you were asking?
Uh, that was my question, but I still would prefer the other style, so.
Yeah, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page.
Um, can somebody talk to me about deliveries of vehicles for fuel and for um, goods?
Yeah, our, uh, deliveries for both fuel and goods are two to three times a week. Uh, the fuel, we have the tank pads up at the front of the site, which would be the west end of the site. The deliveries for the, the C store itself would go through the front door.
So you're going to have all the delivery trucks pull up front? I would assume we're looking at like a bread truck or whatever you're gonna.
Yes.
Um, beer truck, whatever is going to be there.
They, they could pull off to the side and they'll have a sidewalk where they, they've got their two wheelers and such that they.
So there won't be any docking system in the back or on the sides of the building?
No, sir.
Okay, and then where are the tanker trucks going to go for the fuel deliveries?
So I think that what they'll do is they'll access the property from the private road off of Culver and go to the easternmost driveway.
Uh huh.
And either go around to the right of the car wash and make a nice loop. And they are going to end up and terminate where that tank pad is, and that's where they'll drop their load on the west side of the canopy and then continue out.
Okay, so it won't be toward the other side?
No, and I think too, the delivery trucks, I think those, those guys will, you know, they'll find a good spot in here. There's a lot of room, this is one of our bigger sites, we have uh, they'll, they'll, they're usually pretty good.
And we're not talking about, we're just talking normal daytime deliveries?
That is correct.
All right.
Forgive me Lou, if you've answered this before, hours of operation on the actual uh, convenience store?
24 hours.
It is 24, okay.
Everything's 24, are you requesting everything to be 24 seven?
Requesting everything to be 24 seven.
And you are selling beer?
Yes.
Okay.
There's where detailed protocols are in place for the sale of beer.
Yeah, the state would control.
Yes.
Some of the operation on that, I understand. What is the height of the canopy?
The height from the bottom of the canopy is approximately 15 feet to the top is 18 feet.
18 feet?
To the top.
Yeah, one of, one of the comments that I, I think you may have had actually at the workshop meeting was a request for elevations. And I see this, I believe was added to our packet, kind of had elevation view. I think one of the things that you were looking for, which I would also like to see on a drawing, would be some, some elevation markers.
Oh yeah.
Some heights, some dimension.
I, I could address that.
When John said that, I was like, I didn't see him, but.
I, I did put that in the letter that I, I did to Michelle, um, that the top of the building, now, we have not done building drawings as of yet. We typically do not do those until we secure a site plan approval. But I could tell you on, based on other buildings, and I did put this in writing in the letter, that to the top of the building, the highest point is 28 and a half feet, possibly 29.
And I'm sorry Lou, could you one more time just repeat the can, the two canopy dimensions that you gave?
15 to the bottom, 18 to the top.
Thank you.
Will there be any um, outdoor speakers to play music or make announcements?
No, no.
Uh, do the gas pumps have uh, televisions or anything like that inside of them?
Uh, I know some do, I, I don't know whether these will have them here, if they'll be upgraded to that level. But they're also so, a very soil, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, sound adjustable, so they, they don't peel off the site at all.
Um, and then the material that's being used on the fence, um, can you talk a little bit about uh, the type of fencing, the material and then?
Yes.
The stone?
Yes. Uh, I did speak with our, our contractor and uh, he did tell me that it would be a black powder coated fencing, which would be all along Culver Road to the end of the canopy, uh, both for that area and the outdoor seating area. Uh, it'll be a custom made fence from a vendor in Rochester, New York. The material will be an A36 steel with a minimum of one eighth inch in thickness.
And then the stone material?
The type of stone material, is that usually on?
It's, it's usually a, a block, it's a port footer or the block and then the, the stone is put on it on the, on the face of it.
Like a cultured stone, right? Not um, vinyl or anything like that?
No, it's going to be similar to what's on the, the building.
The building, the monument sign, uh, the stone, uh, along the, the, the pillars of the fence, that's all going to be matching. It's the same, same material.
Okay, okay, I, I, I only asked, there was a sign that was put up on Hudson, similar to this monument and they wrap the bottom in vinyl.
Dope.
Kind of looks like real stone, but it doesn't.
That, that will not happen.
Um, on the two different, I got two plans here, um, and then the sidewalk on one run supersedes the um, drive aisle. And then on the other one, it looks striped. So I think that the one that's correct is where the sidewalk supersedes the asphalt on the drive aisle. And I just want to make that confirmation.
Yeah, that might be a layering issue on one of the plans, but the supervisor, the sidewalk will be over top of it.
And that was something we added based on our conversations from the last meeting.
Which I recognize, thank you.
Is there lighting on the street on the private road or whatever we're calling it?
There's a light pole right at the intersection, our favorite little intersection.
But nothing going?
We're not proposing any new lighting.
Okay.
Is there any news about um, the configuration of the intersection?
We have not heard back from Monroe County yet.
Is there a terminus to this um, private road at the moment? Obviously, when it hits the end of your property, I would imagine that's the last of it, you're going to pave, right?
That is correct.
He um, just reminded me that the squat box thing to order, is that 24 hours also?
That is 24 hours also. That uh, menu board and conversation piece would be uh, facing east. So that uh, would be facing, right now the property that, that's vacant and someday there will be something there, we all hope. It would not be face, facing uh, the, traveling south to the, to the neighbors on, on Woodlock.
Could you remind me, um, the access road? Um, so that's, this portion of the road belongs to you and then there's an easement that would be then granted to whoever goes in, in the back, right?
Specifically, the easement would go back to the sellers and the sellers.
Okay.
Uh, let, let's say the.
To whomever, right?
Let's say the deal doesn't happen with who they're talking to right now. They get somebody else, they already have the easement and, and, and writing that would just go to that next developer.
Okay, and so this, um, whatever happens with this end of the road here, the private access road would be up to you to sort out with the county, correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
Um, do, okay. I, I know that, you know, the county would sort that out with you, but I also, it's kind of a big deal. I feel a little, I don't know how comfortable I feel with, I don't, giving the approval without really seeing what the final design is for that intersection.
Well, I think, and forgive me if I'm wrong, and we talked to Carrie about process, if you do give approval, could you, you know, Monroe County DOT access? We have to get their approval and come back to you with final plans before the chairman will sign. So I think we're going to be covered with that and, and we're going to hold our feet to the fire to get that approval.
That is accurate, if something were substantially to change about the configuration of the intersection above and beyond what's been presented here. If it was a slight shift in terms of geometry or the physical location has to shift a foot or two one way or the other, just to make it all line up and engineering work for Monroe County DOT, then that could be reviewed by the town engineer to ensure that that's okay. If there's a over, you know, a wholesale change on the layout, the pole isn't going to move or they need to put three more poles up or something else dramatic would happen, then we would likely have them come back to the, have them come back to this board to review that change and get approval before any, anything moves forward.
So if there's no other question, um, can we go back to the canopy? I'm, I'm sensing that the board's not crazy about what you're proposing. And I'm not clear, I didn't, I don't recall what was out in Webster, I did go out there. So how do we get an idea of what you're potentially proposing here? Is it going to look like the other roof or?
Well, we're, we're sensitive to what, what the board is asking. We, we did want the board to consider what we have, have put together, we, we've heard your comments, um, and, and take them to heart and, and understand the position of wanting to see, let's call it the enhanced canopy. I'm hopeful we, you could help, help me or just get a, an, an approval this evening and even make it conditional on, on providing a canopy elevation. I, I know what you're looking for, that would be maybe the, the chairman could sign off on or something, something that we could just start moving forward to the project. But a, but conditional on, on having that canopy, something that, that you could all, you know, feel comfortable with.
Well, my concern is, is the public won't get a chance to see what that looks like, like, like we're not getting a chance right now. So I'm not, I'm not understanding what it would look like at this point.
Uh, we did do a rendering of one.
Oh, that'd be great.
We could show that, um, if you'd like, like to see that.
You can explain it better than me, I think.
This is the one I think that is, and, and of course they had the cost of the project, but nevertheless, I think it is consistent with what was brought to our attention with. So it goes Ridge Road and also in Webster, what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, pass this out to the board members, this helps me.
Okay, but I, I, I think if we share that, and I, I might have other copies, I know, I think that might be consistent with what, with, what they have in their mind.
I, I could speak for myself, I really like that much better, so.
While the board members are looking at, at that, can I ask a, a very specific question about the lighting plans? Sure. Um, I see tonight we've got a, a copy of a lighting plan that was done by LSI.
Oh, the other one?
Like a third party?
Yeah.
Um, I guess my, my, my question, John, is the information differs as far as foot candle readings between that and uh, your number sheet five of six?
Yep.
I'm presuming that the LSI one is probably.
That's more accurate than, because they really have the heads that they were using. Um, we were using the heads we typically use.
Sure.
But now with all, everything going LED, um, it has changed. So we would include this in our plan set, um.
Okay.
Final plan set.
So, so while I completely understand that it is on the north side of the property is abutting the highway, there are two areas where you've got over uh, one foot candle and in some areas, two and a half foot candles off the property?
Correct.
I'd like to see if they could do something about those two areas. Um, I understand it's a highway, but it's also a general requirement of this board that we're not spilling more than one off of the property. So to be consistent with how we generally look at things, I, I think we need to look at those two areas.
Yes, I think we can uh.
It's not a problem, whether, whether it's shifting the light or a different light or something, consider that done.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, worst case scenario, um, you know, there's probably some house shields or something they could put on the back and that'll help cut that off quicker.
Yeah, we have three light poles along that north edge of pavement and I think we can direct that in a different manner to accomplish that goal.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, uh, to circle back on the vacuum. Um, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but if we were to put a condition on the um, our operation of the vacuums, would there be uh, hours that would be palatable to you?
What, what would you suggest?
Well.
Summertime about nine, about nine o'clock.
Carrie?
Did you post this up there?
What do other people think?
Oh yeah, hold on a moment.
I'm good with 10 o'clock on it.
Yeah, as long as it's not, the noise complaints are going to be unbelievable, I'm sure.
I don't see any benefit to it. I also, we're, we're going back to this car wash thing and um, I think I'd like to see that um, uh, concrete pad on the exit end extended just slightly. I don't care if you want to just shift it from 24 feet in the front and add two more feet to the backside. I think that it just, I'm just seeing the failure and it's got to be, it can't be because of traffic because Ridge Road didn't fail that way. And it has a lot more traffic than that road, so I'm assuming it's a chemical.
Yeah, I, I would prefer leaving the entrance the way it is with, with the concrete there and adding another four or five feet, five feet.
Yep, I think that would be, there's some reason that asphalt's failing, the concrete's not. I'm assuming it's a chemical. Sorry Brad.
No, it's okay, I, I think that people kind of thought 10 o'clock. Is there anybody else that feels differently that that's too early or too late?
I like 10.
Okay, and then to start up at 8 o'clock?
Yeah.
We're talking about the car wash or just the vacuums?
Vacuum.
Vacuum.
Would the board like, I'd be happy to provide the noise ordinance hours for construction related.
Okay.
Activity, um, I'll pull that up. 10 o'clock in the evening is the end time, I believe 7 AM is the early starting time, but I'll verify that right now as we're speaking. This would have been a much cooler trick if I had it pulled up before I interrupted you to share the idea, I do apologize.
Did we see, and this is a dumb one and it's probably here, just um, the, the um, lock on the dumpster and the gate?
And I'm going to just, so sorry, just, it is 10 PM until 7 AM. That, that's the um, the restricted time for construction related activities, so if you wanted to use that as the basis, I think that's good.
I did, I did commit to matching the building material with the dumpster at, at the last.
Okay.
This is why I met Duane tonight, it's driving me crazy.
Split face and, split face masonry and a wood uh, gate, uh, kind of a.
Correct.
Rail on rail or post on post uh, split shell.
Yes.
Last time we spoke, you talked about some discussion that you had with Duncan about the placement of the menu board. And um, was wondering what the outcome of that was and how it impacts the queuing at all.
Um, it, it's at eight cars, that's what we talked about, um, they, they haven't changed that. We're still in conversations uh, with them. All it does uh, from their business standpoint is by moving it, typically it's at five cars. Uh, with the advent of COVID, they're moving it back three spots because customers' orders are typically a little bit bigger. So it doesn't affect the queuing, it just gives those at the pickup window more time to have that, that order ready. It doesn't cause any more time at the pickup window, it, it's just ready there when the customer gets there. It's just a small operational function. I know their main competitor, who I used to work for, hasn't changed theirs yet, so uh, they're, they're still at five.
Do we have any other um, 24 hour to-go windows in the town?
I think the Duncan on Ridge, or is that in city?
The Duncan on Ridge Road at the corner of Portland, do you mean, or the further down? The one further down, further west is located in the city of Rochester. Um, I don't know that we have 24 hour, uh, I, oh, for drive-through though? Are you asking about drive-through or?
Yes.
Oh.
So I, the only, the one I can think of is potentially, but is the McDonald's, I don't know if they're 24 hour, they might just be until midnight.
They're not open in the morning when I go by at 5, so.
Midnight, I'm not sure if there's anyone that's open. Um, and if you'll hold on one second, I'll just check if we have any restrictions from a code perspective that would, and be applicable here.
Okay. What's going to be sold out of that to-go window?
That would strictly be the co-brand Parker, if it wa, co-brand partner, if it was like a Dunkin' Donuts, then it's just the coffee and muffins and bagels and whatever, whatever their normal product line is.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't dispense beer, for example, under executive order 202?
No, sir.
Got to go somewhere else Alan, get your beer.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking because currently if you do have that license, you can dispense it with a meal.
Yeah, it would, it would not be happening at this side, I understand.
All right. I wasn't being facetious about it, just to say.
No, I, I took. No, I, I took it as a serious question, I'm just saying it would, it would strictly be that co-brand partner, the coffee and pop, donuts, bagels.
I want to hop to another lighting question, if I can, and Brad, I want to specifically have this conversation with you, because I think it was you and I that talked about this at workshop. Um, on sheet five of six, which I understand John is not as updated as the LSI plan, that shows the light pole detail, the bottom of the luminaire at 16 feet, which is to grade, so that includes the concrete base. But if I go and look at the LSI lighting drawing, it says we've got 20-foot poles plus a two-foot base.
So as I said, you and I were talking about, about height of pole and, you know, scale and et cetera, et cetera, so.
So we got 16 versus 22, and if the LSI is more accurate, then we're looking at 22 right now.
We'd like you to, to hold the LSI photometric plan in your conversation.
I don't know how the board feels about that. I know we had conversation before about the height of those fixtures, because obviously even though they're full cutoff fixtures, you can still see the actual light source the higher it gets.
I remember when we talked about it, they said something like 16, and I was like, oh, okay, that seems fine, but 22 seems high.
I think 16 is what is over at the well now.
Yeah, I, 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 that's an example that I've tried to look at, bring up a couple of times, that the well now uses pretty short poles.
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, they're able to get whatever they gotta get.
So let's, let's do a hybrid of two plans, so I guess we can go back to the, the lighting company, but we don't have a problem going to 16, if that helps the board. Um, maybe that'll help us on our north property line as well, so we have to...
Probably would, yeah.
Look at that.
Oh, yeah.
And I do have a question, or have the answer to the question regarding hours of operation. So we have in our town code, chapter 139, food handling establishments, um, and it defines, um, restaurant as eating, restaurant, eating place, lunch counter, soft drink counter, milk bar, milk, hot dog stand or similar place for the sale, um, for the sale, for the consumption upon premises, um, of beverages and food of any class or description other than a delicatessen, grocery, drug, or confectionery store. The operation, uh, the limitations are between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, no, no service of food. There is a special permitting process that's outlined in this code that actually is governed by the town board. So if, um, if somebody was interested in looking, um, the only, the exception, um, the provisions in subsection A, meaning the prohibited hours, they don't apply to a restaurant that has a alcoholic, that, if they have their, um, alcohol sales as part of that business. So it's a little bit, um...
Well, because they would be controlled by the state liquor authority.
Correct. Yes, so I think in this instance, I don't know that they could be open between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM without approval and a special permit, permission through the town board. That application's navigated to the clerk's office.
And that would include the drive-through?
I think it would, I think it includes the drive-through, um, yes.
Okay.
So can I ask our esteemed attorney a clarification question on that then? So when we ultimately vote on this, uh, at some stage in here or in the future, um, do we need to mention that in any way as a clarification or a condition? Because it's already a, a code...
Correct, there'd be no need to condition your approval here on those hours of operation, that's a separate mechanism.
It's kind of fine already, so we don't need to, okay, all right, thank you.
Can I just repeat what I think I heard you say? So you, you said that, the town code said that it has to close between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, and that's inclusive of the, the convenience store as well as the drive-through?
No, it's the food service, anything that holds big services, food. So the, if the co-tenant, co, you had another word for it, co-tenant?
Co-tenant.
Co-tenant, um, of the building was a food service establishment like a Dunkin' Donuts, they would be limited and not be able to function or, or distribute food at, between those hours.
So whatever the tenant is and, and their associated drive-through, if they have one, and if they want it, they would go through the town board to, to...
Ask for special permission to change that if the, if they were so inclined.
Understood.
And is there any restriction on the drive-through at all?
There's no, there's no mention, the drive-through isn't the component, it's just the type of food, the food service itself.
So they could be restricted separately through action from this board?
I don't know, I'm not sure, I think I would defer to the town attorney, I don't know that the town, the town code doesn't provide any provisions related to, um, drive-throughs limiting activity, so I don't know if the, there'd be a, I don't know what the basis would be for that, so that's a question for the, the attorney.
I, I guess if, you'd have to draw up a nexus between whatever the proposed regulation would be and whatever the scope of this board's, you know, purview or their review is under site plan. I, I'm not familiar with what that type of appropriate regulation would be, but certainly if there are specific examples...
If I found a health and safety mechanism you could abide by, right?
We could look, I would say it would be a case-by-case basis to see if it was all appropriate within the scope.
I was just, I was asking, and I appreciate the information. I don't have a whole lot more questions tonight, I just haven't had a whole lot of chance to review everything here, Mr. Chair.
I don't know, came in quite late. Um, I, I guess at this point, we could open it up for public hearing, but I am concerned that if we didn't get them until 6:00 o'clock, the public hasn't had a chance to see this either, right?
They, they would have been, um, they would have been on file not until we received them. Um, the, and I don't, we don't have, we didn't have anybody in the past who asked to look at the plans that were on file at the town.
Nobody to date has...
Yeah, no one to date has called us asking to see the plans or to look at the plans.
Okay.
To my knowledge, is that correct? No, no, there might be a couple of people who asked for copies of them early on.
There were a couple of people that asked for copies earlier on, there's one, a couple of people on Whitlock, but, um, I had a couple of phone calls in regards to what's going there, but that was it.
But they also haven't been available for public viewing today, right?
That's correct.
All right.
Well, if I, Mr. Chairman, if I could say a word about that process, I think the best thing about Town of Roanoke and your board is the fact that you have that workshop and meet every two weeks, it's a great benefit, but the worst thing about it is we have 10 days to get a lot of work done. So sometimes we don't get to give you the plans as timely as we'd like to, um, so that's kind of where we are. So, you know, Friday, the plans were completed and, um, so that's all on us, so I'm just telling you where we are. I think that the comments that we've made today are very technical in nature and I think can be easily addressed on plans, I don't think there's anything, there's no change to the, to the site itself, there's no change to the access. We've talked about these issues, we've come great strides with this project. Um, I think that the, uh, the minor changes that we have talked about this evening can be shown. I just leaned over to, to Lou tonight and, you know, if he was, saw fit to give a conditional approval, he would, uh, go with that other awning, that seems to be a major stumbling block. So if anyone's had a chance to, to see that, I think the other things, I could surmise them really quickly, but again, they're all minor. We'll add a three-foot berm along the south property line, um, we'll revise the lighting plan, especially in the north, uh, to reflect 16-foot high poles. Um, we're gonna add five feet to the north car wash, and we're gonna add notes to the plan and no vacuums between 10:00 and 7:00 AM. Um, it's a really kind of minor on the scope of the project we have here, so that's all I just want to interject.
No, and I, I, I want to compliment you guys for your participation in the workshops and everything we've asked you to do. I'm, I'm just concerned that, that the public gets full access to what's going on, because there's been a lot of phone calls and inquiries regarding that property.
Yeah.
So I, I think as a board, we'll discuss that and see where we end. I guess where I'm, uh, maybe I'll ask the attorney. So can we discuss that as a board, um, prior to opening the public hearing? Because if we decide that we want the public, I guess we could open the public hearing and then we could still hold it open until...
Yeah, I believe the public hearing is, is open, right?
Yeah.
Um, and, and to the extent this board believes that, you know, further opportunity to review records and, and comment is, it can just, it can remain open.
Okay, so I'll ask the board, do we want to hear from the public first and then discuss? Because I'll leave the, I'll, I just gotta remember to leave the public hearing open.
I'd hate to see Craig sit back there for nothing.
Okay, so I, I think at this point, is there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, with that, you can have a seat and we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak and/or they can participate remotely? Is that my understanding?
I'll just report, we have no attendees participating remotely related to this case.
Okay. So maybe that tells me our, our public concern is not as large as I thought it was. Uh, could, that's just an assumption, but I guess, um, I'm gonna leave the public hearing open until we have a discussion, if I can do that? I can do that, right? So I think the discussion I'd like to have is, is we have a lot of information, they've worked with us quite a bit to get it to the things that we're looking for. Do we have enough information to make conditional approvals? Or is there any hesitancy that you want to see something more concrete in any area? I thought, let's get that out of the way so that we know where we're at.
I don't think I'm ready for final approval today. I don't, I think I got this at 5:30, even if the public wanted to see it. Did they know at 5:30 to look? I don't know. And I don't know that the town had the capacity to publish it at 5:30. Um, I think that we have done some good work on this, I think that there's still a couple other questions. I did forget to ask the, uh, Kelvin temperature on these lights.
Can we, can we close the discussion though, on if we're gonna go forward or not? How does everybody else feel?
So I, I kind of, I kind of echo the same thoughts. I, I would like to sincerely applaud the applicant for, for their efforts on this project. Um, but I think that there's enough outstanding items and, and I, I tried to take pretty copious notes that I'll share with you, Michelle, um, both on potential conditions which may get cleaned up if and when there's some additional plans and also just on a bunch of things that were kind of open items. So I think I'd like to see some clarification on those in, in, you know, on writing or on paper.
Any comments?
I agree.
Um, personally, I, I think that we made a lot of the big decisions last time and these are relatively minor changes. Um, however, I want to make sure that everybody on the board feels comfortable, so, um, I'm gonna defer to my colleagues on that.
Yeah, you're sitting in the same boat I'm in, okay.
I have a, I have a question. Uh, what we're looking at are what I think we've all considered to be doable quickly. Is it, is, is it within our realm to have this hearing next Monday?
You mean a special hearing or make it part of the workshop, I think is what he's asking? We hate to do that, but...
Yeah, there have been occasions where a special, um, public hearing is called during, on the night of a, of a, um, of a workshop, so I'm gonna look at Michelle to see if we have enough notice time?
Normally that's when it's been, the town didn't necessarily do something that we should have or felt.
I guess the other question I would ask is, is, is two weeks en, enough or not enough? Or is it, if, if a week is possible, can you do it?
Excuse me, John, before you begin, I just want to remind the board that May, um, is, uh, has Memorial Day in it, so we're short a Monday.
Oh.
Because of the Memorial Day holiday. Just to keep that in the back of your mind, there's only four Mondays in the month.
So when, when's our next meeting?
Uh, May 10th.
Is the workshop.
Is the workshop.
So we have to be back-to-back with another meeting, right?
Uh, well, no, because it falls, so there's five, I'm sorry, there's five Mondays. May 31st is the Memorial Day holiday, so the 24th, I was off a week. So the meeting will be May 10th and May 24th.
Workshop, workshop will be on the 10th.
So I guess a more preliminary question is, can you do the legal notice though? Because we couldn't proceed without a legal notice.
I, I would, I would...
That question was answered in the negative, there's no reason to...
I would have to send it in tomorrow. The legal notice would have to be sent in tomorrow and the postcards would also have to be sent out.
I just want to echo what the chairman had said about when we do do these special things, it's generally because something happened on our end.
Correct.
And I get, I'm wary of starting a precedent where, um, you know, there could be, this could happen any number of times. So, and that's my only, I, I'd like to move it along just as much as everybody else, but I'm concerned about that precedent.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Mr. Chairman, am I allowed to speak?
Uh, just let me see, uh, do you want to add anything, Ms. Holmbeck?
No.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
I, I would just like to offer to the board, anything sooner would be greatly helpful for us in our contracts with the seller and the timing that they've pinned us down into trying. Two weeks would make a big difference because we're at, we're, we're at the end of what our, some of our due diligence periods are. I'll just leave that with you to, if you can help us out anyway at all, I'd appreciate it.
Can, can we, can we have a conversation? Has this, has this already received preliminary approval and we're only looking to get final at this point? Trying to remember, we did that recently on something that received preliminary, is that this?
This is not it.
No, I don't think we did preliminary on this.
Do we have LaBella's comments on this project?
Yeah, I do.
You do?
Yeah.
I like, I like the route you're taking here, that would be helpful.
So I'm just, I'm just thinking, if, if, if it would be helpful to the applicant, I would have no problem discussing preliminary approval tonight.
I think that'd be up to the members who were hesitant to do an approval tonight, so I'm, you know...
And I'm, I'm one of them, and I'm just saying, I, I would be comfortable with a preliminary approval, because I do think we're getting down to some smaller items, um, if that would help...
And they've done a lot of work to that point.
In any of your due diligence period.
It would help, yeah.
I don't know, how you feel, Alan?
And Jackie too, don't forget, you spoke up, Jackie.
It's a lot of little things that you gotta condition for a preliminary approval. It's a lot of little things you have to condition for a preliminary approval.
Well, anyway, before we end this today, I want to, I know you said you'll get with her after, I want to get them all written down, so they're on record.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I'm happy to read all my notes if need be.
Yeah, I want to get everything, everybody's notes, uh, so that there's no question. Either way we go, um, preliminary that work for books? Alan, I guess it's, we're looking for you, we'd like unanimous on this if possible.
Um, yeah, I, I could go with the preliminary tonight, but I do want all the questions answered on, on the workshop and the drawings done.
Yeah, we're gonna make sure we write all that down tonight.
Or else there's no reason for us to go forward on the 24th.
Yeah, I agree. So how does this work now, if we give preliminary?
So you're gonna grant preliminary, uh, site plan and sub, and subdivision, well, a couple of things, there's, no, there's no subdivision, forgive me, not subdivision, pardon me.
Seeker's done, right?
Seeker has been completed, that's already been addressed, that was done by coordinated review with the town board serving as lead agent. So the, for preliminary review, for the purposes of your record of motion, you might want to just summarize by saying preliminary review granted with the conditions and issues, um, provided in the record, rather than you trying to laundry list them on a record of motion, and then Michelle will be able to capture them for the decision letter. And then I'll ask...
That's a lot easier for me, I like that, so...
Then I would ask, um, Spencer and any other members who I've identified, specific issues, questions, things that need to be finalized for the final plans, for that to be spoken into the record, so that it can be captured on the decision for, for tonight's proceeding.
That's what I was hoping for, I wanted everything to get documented, so there was no question.
Can I just ask, I have LaBella's comments on this plan, right?
So LaBella, when the, 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 LaBella submitted their com, their comments on the initial, um, plan that was presented, and Michelle, you can stop me if I'm wrong about this, the, so...
No, you're fine.
The, um, the, the plan that's been advanced for this, to this, for the board's consideration, similar in terms of locations?
Because there were questions on that LaBella plan, I don't have it right here, but I remember seeing like some of the, um, underground, um, jointing, there were some questions on...
So I have the, I have a letter here, and, and that, Carrie is 100% correct, it was on the initial submission, but it's a, it's a broad stroke letter, speaking to, you know, make sure you show a clean out here, it's, I don't think it's anything that relates to any planning issue, it's all...
Right, so it'd be more for the, um, for the applicant to address when the town engineer reviews the final plan submitted for the, to the town.
Okay.
But we can, we can submit the, we'll submit the most current version of... But we can, we can submit the, we'll submit the most current version of the plan to make sure there's no other outstanding issues.
Yeah, I would like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I got one more question. So can we go into preliminary with the public hearing open or do we have to close it?
Should be able to leave it open, shouldn't we? Is it still final?
I believe...
Think we have to close it though.
I believe the, it would be a separate hearing for final, so we would need to close it out for preliminary approval.
Okay. So one more time, I'll check, did anybody try to contact us?
We do not have any attendees participating remotely that are, that are here for this proceeding.
Okay, so with that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll move to a motion. So I'll, I'll make the motion that we grant preliminary site plan approval based on the following, we need responses to the following concerns slash questions that are gonna be spoken into the record. Does that work?
Perfect.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Do you want me to go ahead and read through my...
Do I have a second?
No, that's not a full motion, you need those conditions before you have the motion completed.
I was just trying to go by what she recommended.
So...
I was just telling you, if you have that motion and you get it second, you have to vote on it. So you want to put everything in the motion and then get it seconded.
Then let's go back to the way we always do it, we'll just record it.
I'm saying you don't need to write it all down, that Michelle's gonna take notes. On the record of motion, the record of motion, I'm sorry Bernie for the confusion, what I was saying to you is what you write down physically on the record of motion is going to be for the preliminary approval with the conditions that are stated.
All right, so now, now we'll list all of our concerns, so Spence will start.
Oh, okay, well, I have a list, if you want me to go over my list.
We're gonna both read our list, as far as I'm concerned, so go right ahead, Michelle.
Okay, so I have been adding, as you guys have been talking, I have some, let me take this off, sorry, subject to adding a three to four foot berm to the south lot line in coordination with the new pines to be planted. Reflecting, reflect existing pines and oaks on the south lot line. Signage package to return to the planning board for approval. I have submit elevation markers with heights on the canopy, 15 to the bottom, 18 to the top. Subject to Monroe County DOT approval regarding Culver Road intersection. Include lighting foot candles in the final plan set. Condition the hour of operation on the vacuums to be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Extend concrete car wash entrance five feet. Dumpster enclosure to match the existing building materials. Update LSI plan to reflect light pole height of 16 feet. Did I say that right, LSI? Okay. Special use permit required from the town board for the 24-hour operation for food services. Change canopy to second option. Public hearing left open, which that is not no longer, so I will omit that. Submit current version of plans to LaBella for review.
The one, the, the one comment you made about the condition for the town board's permit could be struck and, could be struck because it doesn't need to be listed as a condition, that's just a statement of fact.
Okay.
The only thing I heard in show was five foot to the exit, not the entrance.
To the north.
I'm sorry, bear with me here, let me get up there. For the concrete?
Correct.
Yep.
So extend concrete car wash exit. My apologies.
One other minor thing.
North is, yeah, the direction that it's going.
Five feet north, one thing at a time, one, wait, sorry Bernie.
One other minor thing, I think we were referring to it as the enhanced canopy that was presented.
Enhance?
Enhanced.
Enhanced. And then I believe there was something in regards to the, Brad was talking about the lighting.
I would like then to know the Kelvin degrees on the light. I see that there's three options on here and I'm not really sure which three, which one of those you picked.
Spence, did I miss any?
I'm just gonna read through all mine, which are gonna be a little redundant, just to make sure we cover them all, because I couldn't keep track of where we were on my list, if that's okay.
Okay, I just don't know if I'll be able to type that fast.
Uh, signage must come back to the board for approval. Building and canopy elevations not shown, building height stated as 29 feet maximum and canopy at 18 foot. Project must receive Monroe County DOT approval for intersection. If any major changes are made that impact landscaping, signage, fencing, or similar items, it must come back to this board for approval. The concrete sidewalk shall supersede the asphalt at entrance and entrance exit driveways. Vacuums to start up at 7:00 AM and end at 10:00 PM. Add five feet to the concrete on the exit apron of the car wash. Add a three to four foot berm on the south side with the trees. Okay, that's an old note I had. The light spillage issue on the north property line, specifically where there are two areas that the foot candle readings are above one off the property line, shall be corrected. Canopy shall be changed to enhanced canopy with pitched roof. Light hole pipe, light hole, man, I can't talk, light pole height to be reviewed and changed to 16 feet. Possibly keep some existing mature trees on the lot with the house to be demolished near the entrance driveway and town engineer to review final plans. I think you pretty much had everything, I mean, there's one or two little things in there maybe.
Thank you.
Yep.
If nobody had anything else, I'd second that motion.
Do you want her to read it one more time or are you good?
I'm good.
Everybody good, or anybody else want to hear it again? Okay. With that, do I have a second?
Yep.
So I just want to be clear, the next steps then would be, we're gonna vote?
Yes.
And then what happens next? We gave preliminary, then?
You're granting preliminary approval with those conditions stated.
Okay, and then what do they do next after that? We haven't done preliminary in a while, that's why.
So then what they'll do is they'll submit their final drawings and when we have those in, we'll be preparing the May agenda. We'll have a final approval for this property address and this project stated on it. So instead of, today's agenda says preliminary slash final, the next agenda item will say final approval.
Okay, so we will get those at the next workshop, is that, that's what?
That would be up to the applicant, but I would...
We will make sure that we have plans due prior to the tent.
We can do that.
Michelle, if I could ask you a question, when do you, do we typically bring the night of the workshop updated plans or you need them a couple days in advance for workshop?
Yeah, I will need them. Let me just check the...
We could talk offline, I'm fine.
Yeah, let us do the vote so that we can get you there. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None abstained, none abstent? That passes seven to zero, so we'll see you at the workshop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
And Chairman, the next applicant is participating remotely, so when you're ready, let me know and I will include them and have them join the meeting.
Okay, so we're switching board members, so give us a second. Thank you, Jackie, for doing that.
I'm sorry, you ready?
Okay, I think we're ready, go ahead.
Next case on the agenda is case number PB 2021-04-1. Upon the matter of request by Vanguard Engineering, acting as agent for Marion Scott Spring for final site plan approval and steep slope woodlot and floodplain environmental protection overlay district permits to construct a new single-family dwelling on premises 688 Seneca Road in an R2 residential district. You can, thank you.
Good evening, board members, my name is Jeremy Kimball, I'm with Vanguard Engineering. I'm the applicant's Scott and Mary Spring. The, the intent for the applicants, as stated, was to construct a single-family home. This particular home has a unique layout to it to fit the, the topography of the lot. It's a three-story home, the first floor having a garage, mudroom, some storage space, the second floor being the bedrooms, laundry, bathrooms, and the third floor actually being the living room, dining room, and office space. At the workshop, I think the major concern from the board was the disturbance limit and so one of the comments was to add a orange construction fence detail to the plans. I think the idea was, was that we specifically delineate the area of disturbance and the board was concerned that the contractor could get a little excessive in the disturbance area and they, you wanted a means to, to regulate that.
We learned so much more, yeah, we learned so much more when we got the comments from the town engineer.
So we, everybody can hear you. Jeremy, are you able to hear the board members clearly from how you're participating?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, I'm gonna just remind the board members, I think the mics are gonna be pretty critical for them, him to be able to hear the transmission.
Thanks.
So, so I didn't hear, you said we were concerned about that, what did you do regarding that?
We will, we will add that detail to the drawings upon final submission.
Okay.
We received town engineer comments late Friday. We sent in a letter addressing all those, I worked on them this morning, sent them to Michelle and Carrie earlier this morning. Some of the concerns were steep slopes on either side of the, the house. So, you know, we, we plan to make some changes as far as how we route the surface runoff that's gonna come down the hill from the north of the structure. Additionally, she requested some additional notes, one being adding wetland boundary, which is around Oak Bay. Add wetland buffer. Add the angle of repose profile to the plans. Some concern, some more technical things regarding the sanitary sewer. But I think the major thing that she was concerned with was the, the concrete washout area. We proposed to add some additional silk fence downstream of the concrete washout area and as well as adding some additional runoff control measures, erosion control measures, sorry.
My guess is that, oh, go ahead.
I was just, was there anything else you wanted to say before have the board started asking you questions?
No, I think that, I think that's about it. One update is, is that, rather not an update, we have not received comments from the DEC regarding a wetland permit.
Okay. Board, have any questions? Thank you.
My guess is that we don't have the new drawings that would reflect the comments from the, the engineer.
That is correct.
Okay. You're in the process of preparing those?
Correct, I would, I would expect probably to be finished with them in the next couple days.
And that'll reflect the drywall wells and the other areas that were discussed?
Correct, yes. We originally, sorry, go on.
And also the change in the, the deck area and that kind of stuff outside to the north?
Oh, excuse me, yes, I forgot, yes, the, I believe that the town engineer, the town engineer had an old iteration of the building elevations and I'll get that from the architect. That whole retaining wall configuration and a sunken patio has been revised.
I have no other questions. I bet everybody else does, though. I haven't stole all the good ones.
Any other questions?
Quietly.
Quiet. Anything from the conservation board that you would like to?
We gave you a comment, it was addressed in the LaBella letter.
Okay. With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address this? I don't see anybody in the room. Is there anybody online?
There is no one online to speak to this application, except for the applicant.
Okay. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Any other board discussion? I'll take a motion.
On the matter of case number PB 2021-04-1, I suggest that we approve the application as submitted.
I'm not gonna agree with that, I would like to amend that, that it would reflect new drawings to the town that reflect the comments from LaBella, the town engineer, and that those plans get approved and also we're waiting for comments from the DEC that they have all the permits in place from the DEC and from the county that are required as well as the town.
I will accept that amendment.
Okay, then I'm good.
Can, can we condition our approval upon state permitting?
You can.
Yep.
Okay, then yes. So how do you want that to read? So give it to me again, Alan.
That the, it'd be approved with the following conditions, that an updated, the updated plan be submitted and signed off by the town, reflecting the comments from LaBella, that the permitting be done from the DEC, from the county, and from the town before approval. Or would be simultaneous with the approval.
And can you also add Army Corps of Engineers into that list of, it might be easier if you just said all applicable state agent, state and governing agencies. I don't like that as much.
After I wrote it, you tell me that, okay. Can I just amend also, this is final site plan that includes the steep slope woodlot and floodplain, correct?
I'll accept that too.
Did I skip any?
It's site plan and then the, the EPod permits.
Right.
EPod permits, okay. For steep slope woodlot and floodplain, nothing else, correct?
Correct.
EPod, okay. Mr. Richards, that was your second with those conditions?
Sure.
Well, you know what? We got a problem. Do we do seeker?
This is not subject to seeker because it's a type two, because it's a residential project.
We're fine to proceed then? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None abstained, none absent? It's approved, good luck with your presentation. It's approved. Good luck with your project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Okay. If you're ready, Michelle, next case. Okay.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, case number PB 2021-04-2. Upon the matter of request by Land Tax Surveying and Planning, PLLC, acting as agent for Jay Negren, for preliminary and final site plan approval to redevelop an existing parcel into a Brewster's Ice Cream Store with outdoor dining and drive-through on premises 1930 East Ridge Road in a C Business District.
So I'll be brief. I believe everyone got a copy of this letter that we generated today. This was supposed to be a green project revitalizing a corner and remodeling an existing building, but after the workshop, it became apparent that the building may not be in the correct location for a drive-through. So after we're talking to Mr. Negren after the meeting and some time deliberating himself, he decided that the best interest in his project is to raise the existing building and start anew. So we talked a little bit about the last application, and in the interest of time, we had no time to put together a brand-new plan to present to you tonight, so I just tried to put some bullet points together that you spoke about during the original plan, and to let you know that we're going to be working on this plan to meet the next workshop deadline. And I'd like to get some feedback, incorporate those items in the future site plan.
So you requested a table, is that?
Yes, table, but I'd like to have a little bit of dialogue if we can about the application.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. So what we've taken away from the workshop is we're going to, like I said, remove the existing building. We're going to shift the building slightly to the east to give more room against that crazy wall along our west property line. That'll be adding a bypass lane in that area. Outdoor seating has been relocated. It's going to be on the south and east face of the building. The dumpster has been relocated to the north property line behind the building. Pedestrian access will be shown. Snow storage will be shown. All typical radiuses and things such as that. The plan, it's obviously going to change substantially from what we showed before, but all those elements will be incorporated in the plan. So if there's anything else you'd like to add, looking at the minimal sketch that I provided on the last page, I could take any comments you have.
Do you have to have those parking spots that back up into the drive-up lane? Is there, I mean, are you trying to meet a limit, or?
Again, this is from Corporate Office of Brewsters, and this is what they came up with. It is in the bypass lane. I don't, you know, we're not doing many drive-throughs anymore with bypass lanes. It's kind of something that's gone away.
Oh, really? You got two lanes now?
It's two lanes, so, well, it's not two lanes. That is a bypass lane. So let me take some more time with the plan to scale and see what that looks like. But that would be employee parking, something like that, in that area, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else from the board?
Yeah, I'm happy that the applicant has taken another look at the project, and I think that it's going to work out really well. I think it still is a redevelopment for him, and I think it'll be good for the town.
Yes. This is, Mr. Negren has three franchise licenses in Monroe County, so this is going to be his flagship business, so we really want this to sparkle. And so I agree with him and the board that we should take the time and really make this stand out. I do see some flaws in this layout that I, you know, coming off of East Ridge Road, it's a little hard with that turn, so we'll take some, you know, engineering eye and make a better plan. But if there's anything that anyone sees that they want me to add sooner than later, I'd appreciate it.
As usual, like to see some nice pedestrian access, especially to an ice cream shop. Definitely think we're going to want that bike rack.
Thank you for saying it. It's usually me.
I think the table and bench placement up along Ridge Road is odd. I don't know what other people think.
Yeah, that...
It's also pretty steep there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is steep.
Yeah, there's got to be some movement on that, you know, coming in off of Ridge Road on that angle and making that tight turn right where the patio is. So we'll have, you know, fencing details and things like that added to the plan. I'll check that radius.
I can't believe the guys at Corporate came up with that, never visiting the site.
Yeah, and I think you knew, you could see the notes on our original plan, we were scared to death of that wall along the east property line. So I'm probably going to push maybe to limit the bypass and just get further away from that wall is my kind of game plan.
You going to make that grass then, or?
Probably something like that, yeah. Give a little more buffer and curbing to keep people in line.
Signage, when just breaking up things, you know?
Yeah, the typical stuff.
Yep.
We'll...
Are you going to be open 24 hours for ice cream?
Not anymore.
There's a lot of people that like to pick up.
4:00 AM ice cream fix. Hey, we have some late planning board meetings, meeting at ice cream.
So as I said, I might hope to bring real plans on the 10th, and we can hash them in.
You did give us real plans before.
We did. You want to sign up?
Anything else you're looking for, or?
No, just to tell you where we are. I appreciate Mr. Negren taking a step back. It's not unusual, or it's very unusual for a client to step back and really evaluate and giving us a little more time to do it right.
I'm glad he's committed to it. That's what I'm glad.
I'm glad it's coming back to a round of questions.
It's a flagship coming here. That's great.
So it should be good. So thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you. We don't have to do a motion on the table.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion, actually, to keep the public hearing open until next month, unless there's somebody here, since this was advertised as a public hearing.
Do I have to open it?
I would open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing, seeing no one in the audience and no one online, I will keep it open.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn this case until next month.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Eglent? Mr. Eglent? We're good. Is this going to be Seeker, since it's a new build, or?
Now it would be, yes. Yes, I will double-check that, actually. Let me, I don't want, don't quote me on that.
The size may not...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can we finish the motion with all those in favor?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
None abstaining and none absent. Thank you. Sorry about that, Michelle.
Thank you.
Oh, you got a town board referral. I forgot.
Do we have hard copies?
Good night, John.
Hey, John.
Yes, please.
Touch covered. That's why we need computers. The rest, I'd be like, no.
I don't remember. I remember looking up to see what the district was and thinking, why do they want machines?
This one copy or multiple? This is copies of the town board referral.
This is one for everybody to take.
We're ready.
Sorry. Next on the item is, on the agenda is case, item number, no item number. I'm sorry. It's a town board referral upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting as agent for Steve Labuzada, for rezoning approval to rezone three lots, tax ID numbers 047.56-1-56.1, and 047.56-1-95 in the vicinity of 91 Lakefront, from R1 Residential and C Business to WD Waterfront Development District. So the town board at its last meeting accepted application for rezoning, and also by resolution referred to this board for your comment on the rezone. The public hearing will be conducted at their next month's May meeting to consider all testimony related to this request. So you'll recall, the Waterfront Development District is allowed in town code. I'll be happy to send a link to everyone, so you can review sort of the requirements of that code. But it does, it's what's appropriate for properties that are in and near the waterfront area. It also does provide the planning board with quite a bit of... What's the right word? You have a lot of consideration. Say that again?
Latitude.
Latitude. That's a much, that's a great word. So you have a lot of latitude in terms of the potential design and development in this district. Although the district does also provide a wide range of uses. This is consistent with the proposed use of multifamily. It's eight units comprised of four separate buildings, so it's two units in each building.
And there's nothing there right now?
I believe that, I believe it's vacant land, and I will confirm that.
Oh, love it.
It's a woodlot.
Yes, so it's... So this would all...
Is the property that other condos, is that the same designation that they have?
No, I believe they're designated...
I thought it was R5. I think it's R5 when I looked.
That's what it says on the drawing. It says R5 on the drawing.
Oh, okay, well, then it's...
So that was a question that I had. So the parcel to the west is R5, and the parcels to the east is R1, and then to the south is commercial, right? So how does that... Is that okay for us to do?
It is. So the, a couple of things, the comprehensive plan, that's something that the... Your task is to think about the application and provide the board with your feedback on it. From a land use perspective, there's support in the comprehensive master plan for this zoning designation. And so that's really what the town board is looking at when it thinks about potential rezoning. I can tell you that as part of the waterfront revitalization program update, we might be looking at other updates to code in and around the waterfront areas, and this would be consistent with those kinds of changes. And Waterfront Development District is, in its current form, now there's River Harbor, there's other districts. At some point, the town will be moving forward with a consolidation of those waterfront districts to make it a little bit simpler and cleaner for everyone to understand.
So, and I apologize, because I didn't catch the... So what's existing there, you said, is R1?
It's R1 and C, so adjacent to it is the Westage at the harbor that's zoned R5. It's, there's also C Business, south of the, right along St. Paul as it bends there. And then there's also R1 in that area.
And one of the lots in this rezone application is commercial currently, right?
C Business, correct, yes.
Or C Business.
C Business, yeah.
And then there still would be right away to the beach and all of that, right?
You know what, that I'm not sure. I don't know what the easements are on this property, if any.
That was my next question. So is there, is there an easement on this? Does it play into the rezone?
So the rezone is just the permitted uses, the underlying zoning district. It doesn't affect any restrictions or covenant. Anything that's related to easements would be regardless of what the underlying zoning is. So that would not be impacted by this. This is, from a land use perspective, what the town says is allowed to happen on these parcels of land.
And as far as public access to the water, this zoning would increase the opportunity for that to occur because of the way that the code is written for waterfront development, right?
Yeah, so I think when you look at that section of code, you can take a look to see what the...
You can require, the planning board can require it.
What some of the performance standards might be, and during the planning board review of a future development, there would be some opportunity to explore that.
It's a better zoning for us. Nobody else had anything to say. I would, I would think it would be a good way to make a positive referral to the town board.
I missed that, Ellen. I'm sorry.
Just, I think that this allows, as Carrie said, latitude. I like it. It allows longitude. How come nobody ever says? For us to have some input on the project once it's done, I also think that it does fall within the comprehensive plan. So I, on those reasons, personally, I would do it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
The town board will take, will have a hearing, right, and take, and that will be the opportunity for the public to weigh in, so right now they're just looking at our opinion.
They're just looking, you're looking for your opinion as a planning board on the use, or, excuse me, the potential for the rezone. And then there will be a public hearing at the May, at the May Town Board meeting. That meeting may or may not be extended. It depends. And then no decision is made on the same night that a public hearing is conducted. So once the public hearing concludes, whatever month that might be, then the following month is the earliest opportunity the town board will take to act on the rezone. And then the rezoning also isn't, itself isn't subject to any of the other state or federal agency permits that may be required. That would be something that would get navigated once the zoning was in place and they were moving forward with a development plan of some sort.
So, just a question, if I can ask. So for the waterfront development, we've gone through some of those before, and a lot has to do with how it's going to look and everything, right, from the water. So all of those different things that we look at, that you're going to send us again. If, I think Brad pulled up that where the carports are is R1, right?
Well, they're proposing a rezoning, so the whole parcel, all of the parcels that are impacted or proposed for redevelopment would be rezoned to Waterfront Development.
You mean the carports at Westage, right?
At Westage.
That's R5.
Oh, that is R5.
Thank you.
So where's the R1?
R1 is the front lot that goes from the water back, and then the two below it, I think, are C Business.
Not even...
I got it now. Okay, stop. I got it now. I don't have a question.
My only question is, is the, in this, is the waterfront revitalization, is that what we're looking at here? Yes. I want to make sure I got the waterfront development district. Is that the district that the design guidelines say has to be nautical themed?
I will take a look. So I, to the extent, we have, we have to recall, we have three separate districts.
That's why I'm a little, yeah, and they're all water-related.
So we have River Harbor, that certainly had some nautical references. LaSalle's Landing is also another waterfront district at the south end of the bay. And then we have Waterfront Development District. So I will send you each the code to see what's provided in there, and you can...
Isn't the LDR the one that has to do with the views and vistas? It's sort of like an overlay district that goes over in multiple zoning areas? Isn't that like...
That provision was additional waterfront development, and that's embedded in our zoning code as an additional supplemental regulation.
So that would go on top of, likely, right? This is probably in that area that it would go?
Yeah, I have to remind, remember whether or not that applies to all zoning districts, or if it only applies to the residential zone districts, which I can't remember if it does off the top of my head. So in this instance, though, if, beyond the rezoning, when the time comes for the project to move forward, if there was a rezoning granted, subsequent approvals would be needed by this board by virtue of the Waterfront Development District designation that requires them to come to the planning board. To the extent that any other zoning regulations require your review, I think the waterfront district development, the waterfront development district, I'm sorry, I'm getting those two in reverse, is going to trump the other regulations, because I think that other regulation is intended for projects that would not necessarily warrant planning board consideration.
I see. And that nautical, we pulled that from the comp plan for...
For a certain burger, and, yeah, and that's why, and, well, that's what I was asking. Was that in the same district, or was that?
Nope.
We pulled it from the comprehensive master plan.
Yeah, so we applied it. I see, okay. That's why...
But the Seabreeze district does have...
Then I think, Alan, that, um, that I agree with you, that this allows us to, the latitude, longitude, and the ability to circumnavigate these projects.
So you've got a positive referral to the town board and a second, if you want that, Mr. Chair.
So Mr. Richards, you're making a proposal for a positive? Any comments with that?
That it would, that it, uh, falls within the comprehensive plan for the town, that it adds the flexibility for the planning board to, um, guide the, uh, the project in a way that would benefit the developer as well as the town? And that, um, this property does make sense for waterfront development district zoning, giving it juxtaposition to the, uh, to the lake.
This, this would come back to the board once designed and ready for, 'cause I have some major technical issues, but obviously, I know that's not pertinent right now, but I'm just saying, this comes back.
Yeah, so this would be subject to planning board review and approval, and I'll send, uh, the board the link to the waterfront development district regulations, so that you can see them and be familiar with them in advance of any application.
Thank you, but we have a motion, I'd like to get a second, if I could.
Mr. Evelyn?
I'll give you a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, none absent, none abstain and none absent. So it's a positive referral, and thank you for sending those links.
I got ready for tonight, right through all River Harbor district, was ready to go, and then looked at it again, and I was like, no, this is not River Harbor district, this is another very similar zoning classification, and I need to re-review my notes.
Mr. Chair, are you good with the minutes?
Uh, I'm, I, I'm good with the minutes. Mr. Evelyn, are you good with the minutes?
I'm good with the minutes.
So, in regards to the minutes of, give me the date again, I'm sorry, I just...
March 22nd, 2021.
March 22nd, 2021, all those that approve, please say aye.
Aye.
None, any nays, no nays, no abstains, no absents. With that, I'd like to move that we close the meeting. Do I have a second?
Don't move. Thank you, Mr. Chair.